Okay, it is now past 10:03 a.m. so we can begin. I apologize for the delay. We had to wait until after 10:03 a.m. because we're going to switch the order of the hearings that we're going to be holding today. So we are here today as Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. I am Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I am joined today by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, representing the 6th District, Councilwoman Danielle McCray, 2nd District, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District. And I believe I hit all of the council members. On behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, we have Nina Themelis. On behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, we have Nikki Thompson and Matt Stagman. Staff to the committee who helps make the trains run on time. This would all not be possible without her is Marguerite Curran. We're going to switch the order. We are going to start with Council Bill 21-0043. Oh, and I apologize, we've been joined by Comptroller Bill Henry. And I assume Casey Kelleher from his office as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You are quite welcome, Mr. Comptroller. We are going to start off with Council Bill 21-0043, the Committee on Insurance and Risk Management Revisions. A couple of quick ground rules. Please keep yourselves on mute throughout the duration of the hearing until you are called on by the Chair. If it is your first time speaking, please identify your name, the agency you are with, and your title. When you are finished speaking, please put yourself on mute. In terms of agenda for each of the four hearings that we have today, what we're going to do is we will start off with Agency Comment Reports, as we always do traditionally. After we get through each of the agency reports, we will then take questions from council members. And then we will go into public testimony. We do have a number of amendments that have been proposed by our various city agencies, council members, colleagues, as well as government relations for the mayor, the council president, and the comptroller. I sent an email about five minutes ago that includes attachments with each of those amendments. So you should have six or seven attachments in your inbox. We will get to each document in due time during today's hearings. Before we proceed, colleagues, are there any questions about what today's agenda will be or how we're going to flow through this? Excellent. Seeing as there are none, we are going to first do Council Bill 21-0043, Committee on Insurance and Risk Management Revisions. This bill was introduced by the council president on behalf of the comptroller. I'm going to turn it over to the comptroller for brief introductory remarks in the neighborhood of one to two minutes, and then we will get to agency comments. Mr. Comptroller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Baltimore City Charter, actually, you know what? You guys have my agency reports, so I don't need to read from that. Basically, what I'll just say is that the comptroller was originally supposed to be in charge of insurance for the city. Several decades back, the city, by ordinance, started to do self-insurance and created a division under the Department of Finance to manage and oversee that, the Office of Risk Management. The Committee on Insurance and Risk Management is supposed to be evaluating the city's insurance and risk management needs and making recommendations. However, as we were doing our review of the city code, looking for items that needed to be updated to reflect either what the comptroller's office was actually doing or what it wasn't doing that it needed to do per the city code, we found that the Committee on Insurance and Risk Management hadn't met for over a decade. And so we proposed strengthening this committee by adding several members, including the comptroller personally, to make certain that this committee actually meets and actually does its job of evaluating the risk management needs of the city. And so this would essentially just give the comptroller greater oversight in carrying out duties already mandated by the city charter. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. We're going to start off with the City Administrator's Office. We have Deputy City Administrator Daniel Ramos. Mr. Ramos, City Administrator is favorable with amendments. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand by our report.
Anything you want to add? Are you good?
Just that the risk management is a critical part of the health of our city's finances, and we invite more transparency and oversight into the process.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, we're going to go out of order right now because I know Mr. Ramos has a number of other engagements today. So if there are any questions for Mr. Ramos from the committee, I'd like to entertain those at this time. Just to confirm, I'm going to name council members. Please chime in when I say your name. Otherwise, I'll move to the next one. McCray, Dorsey, Middleton, Burnett, Schleifer, Stokes. Any other council members that may have joined us that have questions for Deputy City Administrator Ramos? Mr. Ramos, thank you very much for being with us today. You're good to go. Appreciate your advice, sir. Thank you. Now, we're going to jump over to the Law Department. I believe we have Hillary Ruley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley of the Law Department. We approved the bill for form and legal sufficiency. We just simply noted that it might be something you'd want to add on whether these new ex officio members would be voting members and also whether you intend a quorum to be the full body, regardless of who's present or just a majority of those present. So it's legal as written, but those are two things you might want to consider adding. Or obviously, you can let the committee itself come up with, you know, their own internal regulations. But again, it's just something that is not clear on the face of the bill. But again, legal as written.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to, I'm starting off with a bad precedent here, going out of order again, so I apologize. Because I want to make sure we address those comments. Let me start with the mayor's office. Does the mayor's office have any concerns with respect to those amendments? Or do they seek, or let me tell you something. Does the mayor's office have any concern with those comments? And is the mayor's office preference to have amendments to address that? Or is the mayor's office comfortable with the way that the bill is currently written? I realize I just let Deputy City Administrator Ramos go.
Thank you, Chairman Costello and members of the committee. So we are comfortable with the Law Department's amendments. The City Administrator in his bill did reference an additional amendment, which was to have the chair appointed or selected from among the members of the committee itself directly. Outside of that, we don't have any issues with the other proposed amendments.
Thank you. Okay, and colleagues, those are going to be in the document titled 21-0043, Comptroller 1 and Law 2 and 3. The reason for the funky title name there, the First Amendment is being offered up for consideration by the comptroller. The Second and Third Amendments are being offered up by the Law Department. Let me jump over to Council President Mosby's office. Nikki or Matt, are there any concerns with those amendments? Nikki? Nikki Thompson, Matt Stagman?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, there you go.
Sorry. Can you repeat that one more time? I'm going in and out. I think I'm having technical difficulty.
Oh, no, no problem. The Law Department's proposed amendments, are there any concerns there on behalf of the president's office?
No, no, not at all. They've reviewed them with our office, and we are fine with those amendments.
Excellent. And Mr. Comptroller, Casey, any concerns on the comptroller's offices behalf?
We have no concerns with the Law Department's amendments. Or we have, we have, we agree with the Law Department's comments and would agree that the bill should be amended to clarify that the ex officio members would be voting members. And also that I think it would be a good idea to hardwire into the law that a quorum would be a majority of the full body.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. I'll take that as a concur. Okay, so we've heard from the City Administrator. We've heard from the Law Department. Mr. Comptroller, we do have an Agency Comments Report. Is there anything else that you want to add at this time, other than that you're favorable?
Stand by my report.
Thank you. Department of Finance, we have either Bob Seneme or Mara James.
Yes, good morning. Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. I'm also joined today by Charmaine McDaniel and Sean K. Stanley from the Bureau of Risk Management. We submitted a joint report for the Office of Risk Management and Finance. We do not oppose this legislation and stand by our report. And Charmaine and Sean K. are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what Mara said. This bill was referred to the Office of Risk Management. The Department of Finance's Agency Comments Report covers both the Department of Finance and the Office of Risk Management. I see Mara shaking her head up and down, so we're good there. Okay, so we've covered law, approved for form and legal sufficiency, the Office of the Comptroller favorable, Department of Finance favorable, City Administrator favorable with amendments, and Office of Risk Management favorable. We are not going to move this bill out of committee today, but I would like to entertain the amendments. First is, you will see an amendment in your package, colleagues, titled 21-0043 CAO. This is amendment number one on page two, strike line 17 and 18 in their entirities. In substitute, one, the comptroller must elect a chair from amongst its member. The term of the chair is one year, and the chair may be reelected. I'd like to move this up, Mr. Comptroller.
Oh, I'm sorry. I realized I may have been unclear when I said that we concurred with the Law Department's amendments. We do not support this amendment from the City Administrator's Office. It was deliberately written in that the chair would be the comptroller they're designee because the charter mandates a responsibility for insurance as a responsibility of the comptroller. And so it makes sense that this committee would be, if it's overseeing and the risk management needs, should be chaired by the comptroller they're designee.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Councilman Schleifer?
Could somebody weigh in on what the role of the chair is?
We'll start with Mr. Comptroller.
Well, in this case, the role that I'm initially concerned with is the ability to call meetings. And given that this committee has not met for over a decade, I know, I know I can be counted on to call a meeting in less time than that. I cannot commit anyone else to that, and so that's why I have offered myself as the chair for this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Does the mayor's office or council president's office wish to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, I'll speak on behalf of the City Administrator's Office and then just on behalf of the mayor's office as well. The reason that we had offered this amendment was initially to reflect the fact that the Office of Risk Management and risk management in general is a shared responsibility among the Law Department, the Department of Finance, and the comptroller's office. And then secondarily, given the fact that the majority of boards and commissions in the city are either appointed by the mayor, the chair, or by the self-selected from among the members of the body, we just wanted to make consistency with the majority of boards and commissions across the city. And given that the comptroller has three appointments to the board or to the committee, we did not think that it would be an issue concerning the comptroller, more or less maintaining that chairmanship. But it was more so for language and consistency. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Mosby's office, Nikki or Matt, anything to add?
Not necessarily. We had a conversation with the mayor's office about this particular amendment, and we had no immediate concerns.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to move the amendment on behalf of the City Administrator. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, McCray.
Second by McCray. We'll do roll call. Costello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Dorsey?
No.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Burnett?
May.
May?
No.
Okay, this amendment passes 5 to 2. Next, we have three amendments, colleagues. That's going to be in document title 21-0043, Comptroller 1 and Law 2 and 3. We're going to start with just amendment number one on behalf of the comptroller. I'm going to introduce that on behalf of the comptroller. Is there a second to amendment number one?
Second.
Can you say what the amendment is?
Sure thing, Councilman. And just so you can...
I'm trying to get it from your email you just sent, but it's not loading yet.
No problem. So amendment number one on, this is, this is being proposed by the comptroller. On page two and line seven, strike the word "and", and on that same page in line eight, after comptroller, insert "and", and on that same page after line eight, insert "one individual appointed by the mayor". Mr. Comptroller, do you want to explain that amendment?
My understanding is that was a request of the mayor's office. So we were accommodating them.
Understood. Casey, anything to add?
Um, that was not a request of the mayor's office. I'm sorry for the confusion. That was a request after feedback from meeting with council people. Just making sure that we clarified exactly how each of the members were nominated.
My apologies.
So that the bill wasn't misinterpreted. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that opportunity.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor that Costello made to move amendment one on behalf of the comptroller. There's a second to that motion by Dorsey. We're going to do roll call now. Costello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey? Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett? Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, this amendment passes 7-0. Next, there are two amendments from the Department of Law in that same document, colleagues. As a reminder, that's the document titled 21-0043, Comptroller 1 and Law 2 and 3. Amendment number two is on page two and line 11, after ex officio, insert voting. And amendment number three, on page two, after line 18, insert quorum. A majority of the full authorized membership of the committee is a quorum. I think we heard Comptroller Henry earlier speak to this, if I'm not mistaken, as well as Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. At this time, I'm going to move amendments two and three as a package. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second by Dorsey. We're going to do roll call. Costello's a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. That package of amendments, amendments number two and three, passes 7 to 0. So we now have a bill that has been amended with four amendments. At this time, we are going to go into recess on this hearing. At the end of the hearings today, I will talk about next steps. I just don't want to have to say the same thing a couple of times. So we are now in recess on 21-0043. Bear with me for one moment, please. Actually, pardon me, we're back in session on 21-0043. Marguerite, is there any public testimony on 21-0043?
Mr. Chair, there are several attendees on the list, 10. There's one call in and several people from different agencies. Did you want them to raise their hand, or you want me to go down the list?
When you say agencies, Marguerite, how are you able to tell that they're from city agencies? Just because you recognize the name, or is it? I guess I'm just asking because I'm not seeing...
They're identified, like for Jim Kingston, he has in parentheses comptroller's office.
We're going to, we're going to skip him unless the comptroller tells us otherwise. Okay, next?
Okay.
If you want to just read the names, Marguerite, if they're a city agency official, we can confirm with either the comptroller's office, the mayor, or president's office, whether or not we're going to skip them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Joanna Collado?
She's finance. We're going to skip her unless I hear otherwise from Nina?
Joseph Watson?
Not sure who that is?
Mr. Watson? Joseph Watson, you're unmuted.
Yes, sorry. I'm a resident of Canton, so I'm really just here to observe the tax credit, the High Performing House home tax credit.
Mr. Watson, do you plan to testify on that bill?
I can if it's appropriate.
Absolutely is when we, when we get there. Marguerite, if you could please note that for Mr. Watson, we're going to skip over him for the next two bills, and then we'll get to him for the tax credit bill.
Which bill is he going to testify about? Which one?
62.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Next is Kimmy Sauer?
Ms. Dower?
The member of the Mass Ave.
Thank you. Next?
Lamela, I can't...
Lamela works for the Department of Real Estate.
Okay. Next is Rhona. Last name is T O D O R C H E V A.
Reyna works for the Department of Finance.
Reyna's Finance, yeah.
Okay, and then we have one call in.
That call in is Keisha Brown, the Department of Finance as well.
Okay, we're okay. That's the end of the list, sir.
Okay, we're all good on public testimony. We're now in recess on 21-0043. Yes?
If I could just ask you a question as the chair. You stated at the outset of the hearing on this bill that it would not be voted out of committee today. Was there any particular reason why not to vote it out of committee today?
Yes, the council president's office still has questions on this. We've just amended a bill. I'd like to make sure we get an interlineated version of the bill and give our colleagues more time. And there's nothing time-sensitive about this that I've heard. As the comptroller has stated, this committee has not met in 10 years. So I think, I think we'll be able to go another two or three weeks.
I mean, that certainly makes sense. Did we hear the questions from the council president's office in the hearing today? I don't know that I heard any questions from the council president's office that remain unresolved, and I'd like to know what those questions are here today.
I think it would be appropriate for Council President Mosby to discuss that directly with Comptroller Henry.
Oh, great, Randy, you're broken.
Really good at certain things. While we're waiting for Chairman Costello to return, I wanted to take a moment to remind members of the council, agencies, and folks from the public that are signed in that if you ever would like to testify on matters before the city council, we do have a new registration form where you can sign up to do that. It's certainly not required, but helps our meetings run in a more orderly fashion. And you can do that at baltimorecitycouncil.com/ testify.
I apologize. My internet connection is spotty, so I had to relocate to my living room. My sincere apologies. I guess that's part of the hazards of working from home in a COVID environment. I'm not sure what of what I said was cut off or not, but Council President Mosby has a schedule conflict today and was unable to be here. So I want to make sure that Council President Mosby has an opportunity to discuss the, any clarification that he needs or questions, however you want to characterize that, directly with comptroller Henry. I know that they have a close working relationship, so I want to make sure that we're giving Council President Mosby the appropriate amount of time to get those questions answered. And I hope that answers your question, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just bear with me for one second here. Okay, so we are going to now move on to Council Bill 21-0041, Board of Estimates, Basic Organization and Procurement Thresholds. This bill was introduced by the council president's office on behalf of Comptroller Henry's office. Mr. Comptroller, I'm going to turn it over to you for a brief one to two-minute overview of or introductory remarks regarding this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of you will recognize elements of this bill as a reprieve of legislation that the council passed at the end of the last term, but which the mayor did not get an opportunity to sign before leaving office. And so we return to take up the issue of the fact that the code currently hardwires in that the deputy comptroller shall serve as the clerk to the Board of Estimates. That unfortunately does not take into account the fact that we have restructured the staff in the comptroller's office so that the deputy comptroller no longer has direct oversight for the staff working on the Board of Estimates agenda. Those responsibilities fall under the Chief of Staff. And so this is an effort to make the code a little bit more flexible and allow for the comptroller to designate whoever would be the more appropriate staff person to serve in that role. As I testified last fall, it also avoids the potential problems such as when last year for most of the year, there was no deputy comptroller because the previous one had retired and the comptroller never filled that position. And so we were essentially in conflict with the law because it mandated someone serve as clerk who didn't currently exist. But as my staff was reviewing the code, we found other things that had never been properly addressed. And so this bill also defines broadly the responsibility of the clerk, which are not defined elsewhere, and also sets procurement thresholds by ordinance which had been set by resolution of the Board of Estimates many years ago, but never confirmed in ordinance as the charter had required when we changed the charter years before that. So we have had a conversation with the Law Department. They recommended several clarifying amendments, which we agreed to. And so I look forward to your support of this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. We're going to start off with the Law Department, either Ashley or Alina.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Elena Deputra for the Law Department on this bill. I think there are two amendments that are necessary for this bill because the Board of Estimates really has broad authority to provide for how it's going to operate. That would include the part about reports and how they were handled. So we suggested that this bill be amended to state that if it's the determination of the board that the comptroller's office should be the entity to conduct this activity, then that's fine. But it should be the board's decision as to how that gets done. So that's why the amendment suggests that we add if provided for by the rules of the Board of Estimates. And the other amendment we thought was necessary was that in the last section 1-3, the last of that particular paragraph, was that the general provisions article doesn't really, does not give the board the authority to enact its rules and regulations. That authority comes from the charter. So that should be amended to reflect that that is not an accurate statement. And the comptroller's office, we discussed an amendment and came to an agreement on what that should be, and they're in the amendments that were passed out today.
Thank you. We're going to jump to the Office of the Comptroller. Anything to add?
Stand by our report.
Thank you. Department of Finance?
Good morning. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. The one thing to note is that with the recent RFP around improving procurement for the city, we just wanted to raise that it's possible that these thresholds could be raised or increased. And so we'll just have to come back to address that later. I should note also that Keisha Brown from the Bureau of Procurement is on the phone as a call-in user to answer any questions if anyone has them about those thresholds. Thank you.
Thank you. So we did Law, Comptroller, Finance, Minority of Women's Business Opportunity Office. We have Ms. Miller? Is that correct?
That is the correct name, but I don't know if she's on.
Nina or Natasha? We also have Natasha Meehu representing Mayor Brandon Scott, who's on the call, who's joined us. Nina or Natasha, can you please comment on whether or not the Minority of Women's Business Opportunity Office stands by its report of favorable?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Yes, the Minority of Women Business Opportunity Office does stand by its report as favorable.
Thank you, Nina. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? I will start in, we'll go in reverse order of districts. 12, Stokes? Eight, Burnett?
Good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Six, Middleton?
No question.
Five, Schleifer? Three, Dorsey?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I wanted to ask if Elena could reiterate what she said about proposed changes and ask the comptroller's office perspective on that.
Certainly. So Article 2, Article 6, Section 2 gives the board broad authority to promulgate its own rules and regulations to exercise its powers. So it would seem to me that one of those powers is what to do with these reports. So in order to put that in the right perspective, we suggested an amendment that said if designated by the, or if provided for in the rules and regulations of the board, that comptroller's office may compile these reports or whatever. It was, it's also pretty unclear exactly what those reports were. So that makes it even more important that the board promulgate rules and regulations that give specific instructions as to what they want done and what reports, what they consider to be reports. And then in Section 1-3, it states that the board, the APA, the Administrative Procedures Act, provides for the board of estimates to promulgate rules and regulations. That for the Board of Estimates is not correct. They have their authority via charter. It may be subject to other provisions of the APA. That's a different question, and I don't go into it here. But that particular statement is incorrect. So I think we agreed on an amendment, which I don't have in front of me at the moment. Click around here and see where I put it. Have it open. There we go. That says pursuant to Article 6, Section 2 of the City Charter, the Board of Estimates has the ability to make rules and regulations. So we agreed to just cut the APA out altogether. If it applies, it applies. It doesn't have to say that here.
Yeah, I will. I'm trying to think if there's a faster way to say what I'm trying to say. Basically, I had a conversation with Elena yesterday. I followed her reasoning on both of her concerns, which is, and our office worked with law and legislative reference on putting together these two amendments. One of the reasons why, just to share that I'm completely comfortable with the addition of if directed by the board in its rules and regulations is we have a parallel process going on where the Board of Estimates is considering setting up bylaws, which either we have never had or which no one can find. But we're in conversations right now with the Law Department and other members of the board to try to address the memorializing of a lot of stuff that the board just does because this is how we've always done it, but it's not actually written down anywhere. And so, you know, some of it should be in code to make sure that it is widely available and making sure that the council is involved and engaged in how the Board of Estimates runs. But some of it also should be in the procedures of the board, which we're going to memorialize in bylaws. So referring to that here seems an incredibly appropriate way to address that.
Well, thank you to you both. Mr. Chair, do we have the amendments distributed to the committee? You're muted. No. I can hear you now.
Thank you. I'll put this away. Appreciate it. Councilman, in the email that I sent out earlier, a little after 10:00 AM, the amendment should be in that, should be in there. I'll get to it in one second here. Apologize for the technical difficulties here. So there's a document titled 21-0041 Law. There are two amendments in there. And I believe those are the amendments that were just discussed by the Law Department as well as the Comptroller. Are you in receipt of that, Councilman?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm clicking back and forth between an email of amendments from you and one from Marguerite, and I got mixed up there. Thank you.
All good. Thank you, Councilman. Finally, Councilwoman McCray, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we entertain, before we move these amendments, Mayor's Office, are there any concerns with these two amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The mayor's office has no concerns with the amendments.
Thank you. Council President's Office, any concerns with these two amendments?
No concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Comptroller's Office, any concerns with these two amendments?
Yes, sir.
Finally, Law and Comptroller's Office, do these amendments accurately reflect the discussion we just had?
Yes, from Law.
Comptroller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to move the two amendments as a package. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Dorsey. We will do a roll call. Costello's a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
All right, these amendments pass 7 to 0. We will now go into recess on this hearing for the same aforementioned reasons. At this time, we will now call to order. Actually, back in session for one second. Marguerite, can you confirm that there are no new listeners, viewers, et cetera?
I'm confirming the same. There are no new attendees.
Okay. So unless I hear otherwise in the next five or six seconds, I will safely assume that there is no public testimony. Okay, we're now in recess on that bill. We will now call to order Council Bill 21-0042, Real Estate Records Modernization, introduced by the Council President's Office on behalf of the Comptroller. Mr. Comptroller, turning over to you for a brief introductory remarks of about one to two minutes to explain the bill. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I would like to yield my time to our acting director of real estate, Mr. Andy Frank.
Mr. Frank, good to have you back with the city. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Subject to certain exceptions, the Department of Real Estate is responsible for matters relating to acquisition, disposition, leasing, and relevant to this bill, the inventorying of city property. City Council Bill 21-0042 will bring greater transparency to the Comptroller's Office by repealing and replacing two provisions of the city code. The first provision is that the Comptroller's Office has to maintain, and I quote, "a well-bound leather book," unquote, "of real property records and replace it with a computer database." The second would appeal, would repeal a mandated public inspection process and replace it with a public online posting. In other words, putting that database I just referenced of city-owned properties online. The bill provides for a six-month implementation period, and during that six months, real estate would work with Department of Finance, Department of General Services, Baltimore City Information Technology to utilize existing software solutions to make the list of city-owned properties not only accessible, but mapable, searchable, and sortable. That's a summary of the bill, and for those reasons, we support City Council Bill 042.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. So we're going to, just as a formality, skip over the Comptroller's Office on their agency comments report. I think it's safe to assume you all support this bill?
Yes.
I will take that as a yes. Excellent. Let's jump over to the Law Department. I believe we have Ms. Rulie on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency as written. We just note that obviously the city's record retention requirements were just changed last year, and it comes up with a scheme whereby every city entity comptroller would be no different. It's supposed to have a records officer and coordinate records activities with the legislative references, city records management officer. But because this is also a code section, it's more specific and latter enacted, it would govern over that process. So that's not an issue. And again, because nothing's being destroyed or not kept, there's really no issue with the state law either. So it was just two things we pointed out in the bill, and it's legal as written.
Thank you, Hillary. Let's jump over to Department of Finance.
Thank you, Mara James, Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We support this legislation. We believe that it's important to be doing these efforts to modernize and create efficiencies in this way, and as well as opening up for accountability and transparency. Based on conversations with the Comptroller's Office, we expect that there would be minimal fiscal impact and that it could be absorbed in their current budget as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Baltimore City Information Technology. I believe we have Leila or Robert with us today?
This is Todd Carter here.
Hey, Todd, how are you? Take it away, sir.
Good on you, Mr. Chair. So BISIT is in favor of certainly the modernization of these digital real estate records. One thing that we put in our report was the need or the ability to look at other technologies that we are either using in Baltimore City today to determine what's the best technology to use to leverage what we have so that we can put together a solution that others can benefit from in the future, especially when you think about the process of the need to digitize records, the need to have workflow for records, the need to report. There are just a number of items in Baltimore City that are manual that need that same type of functionality. We're supportive of this. We just want to make sure that we leverage the technology across Baltimore City.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Comptroller?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to chime in to echo Director Carter's sentiments. There are multiple agencies of city government that have some type of asset management process, and we are really looking forward to working with all of them to make certain that what we come up with has the maximum amount of interoperability. That is something that we are 100% behind, and we look forward to working with the other agencies.
Thank you. I know my response wasn't solicited, but we certainly have a lot of work to do around asset management in the city. Department of Housing and Community Development, I believe we have Ms. Murdock with us.
Hi, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report in support of this bill. We recognize that this is part of a legislative reform and modernization package. So we look forward to seeing it moved through. We do have a friendly amendment that we'd like to offer on page 3, line 1 of the bill, to replace the word "fair" with "assessed value." That amendment was referenced in our bill report, and I should, council members should have it from DLR at this point.
Thank you, Stephanie. Department of Real Estate is favorable. I assume Mr. Frank and Mr. Comptroller, there's nothing to add there?
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Actually, the only question I have is, I'm sorry that I'm just becoming aware of DHCD's amendment or suggestion now, and I...
Well, can we get to that one second, Mr. Comptroller? Get through the agencies. Thank you, sir. Baltimore City Archives. I'm embarrassed to say, I don't even know where Baltimore City Archives falls on the city's organizational chart. If someone from the Mayor's, Council President's, or Comptroller's Office could help me with that. I don't mean that in a terse way. I honestly don't know where it falls on the org chart.
Mr. Chair, Tony DeFranco from DLR has his hand raised. I believe he can answer this question.
Excellent. Mr. DeFranco, thank you for joining us as always, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tony DeFranco on behalf of DLR. Archives is underneath our umbrella. I believe that they have no objections, however.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can confirm what Tony just said. They did send a email to the town Austin indicating that they do not have any objection.
Tony, Matt, thank you very much as always. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Okay. Colleagues, before we get to the Comptroller's question, colleagues, are there any questions for the city agencies? Seeing that I'm running out of creative ways to order the questions, I'm going to start at 12 o'clock on a map and go counterclockwise on the city, starting in North Baltimore. So we'll go to Schleifer first.
Yeah, the only thing I want some disclarity on is what Stephanie was saying. Just explain what she had in mind.
Stephanie?
Sure, absolutely. So right now, the legislation reads that the comptroller and the Director of Finance maintain information on the fair market value of the property, which is to be updated every three years. So the amendment that we're suggesting is to replace the word "fair" with "assessed value." In that way, the city would not need a third-party assessor to make that determination.
Mr. Comptroller?
Yeah, my only concern with that is I have noted on occasion that ESTAT's database often does not include city-owned property. Because if it was always owned by a non-tax entity, then they just never bothered to assess it. And a fair chunk of the property that we expect is, will be city-owned. And so my question is, could we do "fair or assessed" so that we have the flexibility to get a fair market value for properties that aren't assessed by ESTAT? Would that make sense?
That would be okay for DHCD. I'll defer to the other agencies.
Andy, does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So let's go to the, on those comments, let's go to the Mayor's Office. Does the Mayor's Office have a position on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We understood the Department of Housing and Community Development's position, and we don't have a stance on the amendment.
Nina, with respect to, I guess, the, and I see Hillary, I'll get to her in one second. I guess with respect to the counter amendment by the comptroller to make it "fair or assessed," is that correct, Mr. Comptroller? Fair or assessed? Is there any, is there any, well, let me come back to you, Nina. I want to, I'll get through your agencies. So let me go to Law Department. Hillary?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned. I hadn't seen this amendment till now, but the term "assessment" is a term of art in tax law. It means the value given by ESTAT times the tax rate. And we all think of it as assessment is value, but it's not. And it's a little concerning to me because, as I'm sure the upcoming tax credit legislation we'll hear in this session makes obvious, we have no control over ESTAT. And so we don't really have the ability to ever get an assessed value when we want it. And I think that probably goes a little bit to HCD's comments. But I would just say "value." You know, ESTAT will give the property a value, and then they will assess it by taking that value and multiplying it by the tax rate. So I just think you're kind of bringing ESTAT into a world where I think we would all want them not to be. And so I would just caution against that term. I mean, it's not going to make the bill illegal, but I think it's going to make it more confusing because, you know, ESTAT does value the property on its own terms during its own cycles. But it's, the value is separate than the assessment. So I would just caution using that term.
Comptroller?
I think that Hillary's point is the same point that I was making, but just from a different direction, which is, I'm just interested in not locking us in to something that makes things harder. So if taking both "fair" and "assessed" out and just referring to "value" and leaving it to us to come up with whatever is the most efficient and accurate way to determine value, as long as the law is providing us the needed flexibility, that's fine with us.
Before I go to HCD, Mr. Comptroller, how would you envision carrying that out specifically? Would there be, you know, a policy or rules and regs defining what that is or how that value is determined?
I imagine we could do that with an internal policy in real estate. Andy, does that make sense?
I think so. I mean, the focus of this bill is to create a citywide database and make it available to the public. As in connection with that is this notion of a value, which is really secondary to the importance of putting city-owned properties online. My concern is requiring the real estate office or comptroller's office to do something that doesn't exist now. We have 10,000 citywide properties, and which is why we had initially understood and accepted the notion of using assessed value. If we use the word "value" and it doesn't require us to go out and do appraisals or monitor the sale, the sale of property, and then do valuations, then I think I'm fine with that. But I'm concerned about doing something that would require us to do something that we don't have to do now in terms of assessing value of city-owned property.
Stephanie, do you want to respond to Law and the Comptroller's Office?
Yeah, this is something that came up with, when we had internal meetings with the Comptroller's Office, and really is a discussion point. This is a friendly amendment. We would be okay with this bill moving forward without it, but just thought it would be an appropriate time to discuss it, so.
Thank you. Council President's Office?
Can you hear me again? I apologize.
Oh, no, you're good.
Technical difficulties this morning. We have no issue with the amendment. It was brought to our attention that the amendment was being asked for, and so we've seen the testimony and understand the need. We approve the amendment.
Okay, so we've got three options here, I think. Option one is to use the word "fair." Option two is to use the word "assessed." And option three is to use neither and to have the Comptroller's Office promulgate some type of policy, rule, reg, et cetera, that outlines how the word "value" is determined. Did I capture that correctly? Any concerns with how I captured that?
Technically, there was an option under, was it "fair or assessed"?
Okay, so we got four options: fair, assessed, fair or assessed, or nothing. Okay, and just to confirm, the Mayor's Office and the President's Office have no preference either way. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we would just defer to the Law Department to make sure whichever terminology is used is legal.
Okay, as I'm slightly confused, I want to go back to the Law Department because I've gone through a couple iterations of that. So Law Department, which of those four options are you okay, are you okay with "fair"?
Yeah, I think you might want to just say "value" as, as Andy Frank noted, the point was the online database. And what I don't want to see happen is that somebody says to the Comptroller's Office, "Well, yeah, you have a value up there, but it's not a fair value," or "it's not a market value," or "it's not an assessed value." If you just leave it at "value," that gives you the widest possible option. And then you're not legally stuck saying, "Well, gee, you know, I've got to go out and find some value I don't have." Value would capture all the terms and would give you the broadest leeway. I don't know the benefits to this database of picking between "fair" or "assessed" or whatever, but my advice would simply just be, if you want the broadest possible option, just use the word "value." I mean, some of the other options would be legal, but I would think, I'm hearing, that "value" is the word that people might all agree on.
Schleifer, then Henry?
Yeah, so Hillary's, to Hillary's point, though, if you just do like "fair," I mean, there's no real benchmark. I kind of like the comptroller's suggestion on, you know, the "fair or assessed" because then it sets some type of benchmark. Like, when you look at like city properties in general, and you look at sale of city properties, for instance, if you say, "What's a fair value of a city-owned building right now?" You, most people would say, "Okay, let's look back at other similar buildings and try to determine what a fair value is." Well, Baltimore City historically sells just about anything for a dollar. And so, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be what we would understand to be a fair value of a building. And so I feel that having "fair," having, you know, the "assessed," throwing in the word "assessed" into the equation would create some type of benchmark. Because if a building is worth $5 million, just because another $5 million building was sold by the city for a dollar does not mean it's worth a dollar. It means it's worth somewhere between a dollar and $5 million. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, and I understand that, Councilman. All I would say is that if that property has been listed for more than several years as city-owned, then ESTAT has no legal authority or requirement to go value it at all. It's not on the tax rolls for them. So, you know, and when they value and when they assess, it's completely governed by state law. So you and everyone else may really want to know, is it $1 or $5 million? But if you use that term, that's not something the city would ever be able to do. Even if we sent an appraiser out, it won't be an assessment. It'll just be a value. So I just think, keep that in mind.
Okay.
Middleton? I think you're on mute, Madam Vice President.
Oh, thank you. Sorry there. So I, I understand what Hillary is trying to present. And I just give an example of, we know that the Langton Hughes Building had recently been gone through turnover to a private organization. And it's a lot of things wrong with that building, and the assessment of that building, I feel, was incorrect. And, you know, the building needs a new roof. I mean, I could go down the list. And I think what Hillary is trying to say, there's a whole lot of little, there's whole, many different circumstances of a building, of a single house, of a row house. And you need the community that the building is located in. There's so many different things that need to weigh on it. And using the word "value," I think, can explain all of those things and give a chance for, you know, the circumstance or situation that we're going through in trying to sell the building. Did I kind of explain myself right?
Yeah, no, at least in my estimation, that was pretty clear, Madam Vice President. So let me do this. I want to, because we have four options on the table, right? We've got "assessed." Option one is "assessed." Option two is "fair." Option three is "assessed or fair." Option four is "nothing." It sounds like we're starting to build some consensus, at least from the agency perspective, around "nothing." But I don't think we have full consensus. So I'd like to offer up the following two options, and I'd like to just informally poll our colleagues on the committee. So first, I think there's two options here. We could move the option four, which is "nothing," right? So no "assessed" and no "fair." And that would also include some type of requirement that the comptroller put together a policy or rules and regs or something and post something on this website for this database saying, "Here's what 'value' means," so it's clear to people. That's option, I think that's option one. I think option two is, we could consider a motion to vote the bill out of committee today, and we could ask the Comptroller's Office, HCD, Law, and the President's Office to get together, starting, you know, this afternoon, and come back with a recommendation for the full council's consideration on Second Reader on Monday evening. Because if we move this out of committee today, this will go to Second Reader this upcoming Monday. So let me, let me start with that. I'll just go in the order, again, because I'm running out of creative ways to go through the order of everyone, going counterclockwise from 12 o'clock. Schleifer, what is your preference in how the committee proceeds here?
I mean, my preference would be to go with the comptroller's suggestion and do "fair or assessed," so we have some type of benchmark.
Okay. Middleton, what's your recommendation or desired approach here?
I understand Hillary's suggestion, but, you know, if you have "fair" and "assessed," I can accept that.
Burnett?
I would go with the comptroller's recommendation.
"Fair or assessed"? Okay. Let's see, going counterclockwise here. Next would be Stokes?
I like Hillary's, actually going with the Law Department. Can you explain, can Hillary explain one more time real quick what a suggestion was, if that's possible?
Sure, Council, sure, Councilman. My suggestion was to use the word "value," so not put "assessed" or "fair." Because then the theory would be that when a property's information is posted online, someone would say, "Well, actually, you didn't meet the requirements of the law because the value you gave it is not ESTAT-assessed, and I don't think it's fair." And so because this was really just about a real estate database, you could meet the requirements of the law by putting up a value, obviously internally, always trying to make that a fair value, but not tying yourself legally to it. So that would be my recommendation. But to be clear, every single option on the table is legal. There's nothing wrong with tying yourselves to an assessment. It's just, in many instances, you may have none. Or tying yourself to "fair," which in many instances, people could debate.
Who's that? I'm sorry.
That was Councilman Stokes. I was just trying to debate. But you can, can you come back to me?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Councilwoman McCray, any preference?
I would actually, I would actually, I hope you guys can hear me. I would actually prefer if the agencies came together, just to make sure. I don't want to lock us in. And I feel like I understand what Hillary is saying regarding the value thing, but I don't want to lock us in. I want to make sure that everyone agrees on what we're going to use. So I'm not opposed to the agencies coming together, submitting something to the committee, and us taking care of it on Second Reader.
Thank you. And Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no real qualm about using "fair" or... Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have no real qualm about using fair or, fair or assessed, um, together, but I, my preference would be for what Hillary is suggesting. I think that makes a lot of sense, just to create, you know, broad leeway.
Um, okay. And finally, me, I'm going to agree with, um, Councilwoman McCray. Um, I think my preference would be, um, to let, uh, the agencies come together, uh, and try and come up with something. Um, so here's, here's what we'll do. Um, a- and I recognize, um, McCray and myself are, are in the minority here. Um, I think the most prudent course of action would be to, to, you know, I, I don't see a, a burning rush to get this done, uh, you know, today. Um, and I think we do have some ample time, uh, to, to give the agencies to, to kind of fully flesh this out and, and work together, so everyone's on the same page. And I think, I, I think I can speak for everyone on the committee in that if all of the agencies and, and, and the Comptroller and the Council President were all on the same page, that the indifferent to, to the nuance here, right? Um, I, I don't see anyone on the committee disagreeing, correct? Okay, so-
I'm okay with that. I mean, if that, that helps. I don't, I don't have any strong objections either, right?
So, I don't, I don't want to impose the, the minority will here on the committee, but unless there's a, a burning desire and a motion made by the committee, um, I'd like to move on from this discussion and, and give the, the agencies time to work together.
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Councilwoman McCray. I think all the agencies need to get together so we, they can come to in an agreement. So don't look so like it's confusing. If this word is good, this word is bad. So I think that suggestion is welcome.
Okay. Colleagues, um, seeing that there's, uh, Mr. Comptroller?
Yeah, I, I would point out that if the committee were to follow the Law Department's recommendation of just saying value and not defining it, then you could go ahead and move the law forward. You could, you could move this forward and let the agencies work together to come up with the rules and regs, which wouldn't require City Council approval.
The rules and regs would require City Council approval because of Councilman Dorsey's bill from last term, if I'm not mistaken. Councilman Dorsey, is that correct?
Um, I would actually defer to the Law Department on applicability of rules and regs for things within the Comptroller's Office.
Okay, before we go down that rabbit hole, um, no offense to you, Councilman. Schleifer had his hands up, uh, up. Councilman Schleifer?
I don't know. I was just a- asking to hear from the Comptroller to see what, you know, his position was on it, being that his agency, you know, is a key player in this.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my attitude towards this is I don't think we have to wait until real estate and housing and general services and IT and everybody has come together to do the comprehensive asset management that we'd all like to see done. Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't referring to that. I, I don't want to con- conflate that position. And I think that the committee's in, in agreement with you, Mr. Comptroller. What I'm saying is, what I'm suggesting is, let's move this bill out of committee today and have your office and law and housing and the Council President's Office convene today, tomorrow, whenever, to come up with the, the appropriate course of action on this one individual.
Oh, just on, on how to define value? Oh, okay.
Just, uh, just on this item, and then get consensus amongst those four. And then bring it, and then, well, I will introduce a, an amendment on the floor on Monday on behalf of whatever that consensus may be.
Happy to accommodate.
Is, is, is the committee good with that approach here? Okay, excellent. Sorry to be-
Mr. Chair, to clarify, are you saying you want to move the bill unamended? Or you have some minor amendment to strike fair market from the bill?
Um, give me, give me one second to respond to that, Councilman Dorsey. Um, so we're on. So I want to, I want to not do anything with DHCD's amendment. So let's, let's take a step back here. Let's go to the Comptroller's amendment first. Okay? And that's going to be in, in your, in, in my colleague's email, 21-0042, uh, dash Comptroller. Amendment number one, on page three and line 15, insert opening and closing brackets around two. And on that same page in line 21, insert an opening bracket 42. And on that same page in line, strike the opening bracket before key. This is obviously technical in nature. I'm going to move the amendment on behalf of the Comptroller's Office. Is there a second? There's a second by Dorsey. Costello is a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment passes seven, nothing. Um, what, what I'm proposing is we're going to ignore DHCD's, uh, proposed amendment for today. Uh, we're going-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Marguerite, uh, did Councilwoman McCray say nay or yea?
I believe she said yea.
I said yes, Marguerite.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to ask Comptroller, Council President, um, law and housing to come together and reach consensus on this. So, I'd like to provide some guidance for the four agencies as you, as you move forward. Whatever you come up with, I would ask that there is an amendment, uh, to the bill, uh, which says something to the effect of the term value is going to be defined on that website or database that's public facing. So whatever it is that we all come up with, there's going to be a footnote or something next to word value on that, on that database. Are there, is there any concerns with that? Okay, just in the interest of transparency and providing clarification for folks, I think that'd be helpful. So, with that, colleagues, are there any other questions for city agencies on this bill?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Again, just for clarification, I believe that if we're asking for this collective to come up with something, uh, referring to where value is going to be defined, then we want the bill to simply say value, not fair market value, right? A- as, are we going to have it?
Um, we're going to, what I'm proposing is to allow them to reach consensus and then amend it. So for now, we'll just leave it as is, with the understanding that they're going to come back with one of four recommendations. Right now, it says, uh, uh, fair, correct?
As, as drafted, this bill would have it say fair market value.
So it's, so it's either, they're either going to come back to us and say, leave it alone as fair market value, or option two, change it to assessed, or option three, change it to fair market or assessed, or option four, get rid of fair market. So for now, let's just leave it alone and, and let them do their thing and come back to us with a recommendation. Is everyone good with that? Outstanding. Seeing no concerns. Uh, colleagues, any questions for the city agencies? Seeing no questions at this time. Marguerite, can you please confirm that there are no new participants in the hearing that may wish to testify in this bill?
I believe there are two new attendees.
Okay, let's, let's call those folks out.
Derek M., you're now un, um, unmuted. Do, do you have anything you'd like to say, Derek M.?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You said we got their one.
Uh-huh. Okay, one more is Will. Last name is H E T T I N G E R. You're unmuted.
No, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just, go ahead.
Yep, that's, that's it, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, at this time, is there a motion to move this bill favorably as amended?
No, so moved.
Motion by Dorsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton, I think. Yes. Uh, Costello is a yes. McCray?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Uh, this bill, uh, moves to second reader, um, on, uh, let's see here, Monday. Checking my calendar.
May 3rd.
Monday, May 3rd, at 5:00 PM, or at the next meeting in City Council. In the meantime, um, which, um, I'm going to put this on Casey Kelleher. Casey, um, if you could please get back to me once there, eh, just keep me updated and looped in. Um, a- and, uh, as we get to consensus here, again, as a reminder, um, please ensure that the Comptroller's Office, the Council President's Office, uh, the Department of Law and the Department of HCD. Nina, do you want the Mayor's Office involved in that, too?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we'd like to participate if possible.
Absolutely. So Casey, please coordinate amongst those five. Uh, and please make sure that there, whatever you all come up with as consensus, uh, that there is some amendment that addresses, um, uh, the word value being defined on that publicly facing, uh, database. And please work with, uh, Mr. DeFranco, who we all appreciate, uh, to get that amendment drafted. Everyone good on that one? All right, so we're now in recess on that bill. Um, finally, uh, we have one other bill, uh, that is Council Bill 21-0062, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Clarifications. Um, I am the sponsor of this bill. I'm going to give a brief introductory overview. Uh, so this ordinance essentially does, uh, three things. Um, the first thing it does is it extends the credit for one year uh, from the current expiration date of June 30 of 2021 through June 30 of 2022. Uh, the credit, as last established by ordinance in 2019, is currently set to expire on June 30 of this year. And the previous mayoral administration initiated a comprehensive review of the efficacy of all of our locally authorized, uh, tax credits by City Council ordinance. Um, that, uh, review continues, uh, through the Scott administration. And I know that, that, um, once the administration has had time, uh, to do its due diligence, uh, that eventually there will be recommendations that are made, uh, to the council. Um, this effort, which is being, uh, by the Department of Finance, um, and is being led, uh, by Ernst &amp; Young, uh, who we do a significant amount of work with, uh, is near completion. So eventually, those recommendations are going to come to the City Council, but not in time, uh, to provide, um, uh, the City Council with time to take appropriate action on this credit prior to June 30th. Uh, it is my belief that the credit should be reviewed in the comprehensive context of all tax credits available in our economic development toolbox, so as not to create further one-off or fragmented or siloed areas of tax relief. Uh, the administrative burden to the Department of Finance to turn this credit off and potentially back on would be significant. Um, and I think it's very important to note that this credit is one of the more equitable credits at our disposal. Uh, I have sent a map out to our colleagues, uh, showing all the places throughout the city of where it's been used. Uh, number two, uh, this ordinance would fix the blackout period, uh, of fiscal year 20, or July 1 of 19 through June 30 of 20. In short, if a permit was pulled during this period, that property is technically ineligible to apply for the credit. And this is due to an inadvertent change in state code, which removed the definition of, quote, newly constructed dwelling, end quote, to which our city quo- code pointed to. Uh, this ordinance essentially establishes that same definition, the exact wording, as previously used in state code, and inserts that definition in our, um, city code, uh, so that we are no longer pointing at, uh, a, a definition in state code, uh, that does not exist. Uh, this will ensure that the original legislative intent, from when I introduced this in 2019, uh, to ensure properties with permits granted during this blackout period are in fact eligible to apply. And finally, uh, number three, it establishes a 90-day buffer period for applications. Um, normally, uh, tax credits expire on a certain date. Uh, this credit is no different, and that eligibility would end at 11:59 PM on June 30, 2022, uh, if, uh, the, the bill is enacted. Um, this modification would ensure that applicants are permitted to submit their application up to 90 days after settlement or closing, uh, per the existing language in the law, as long as that occurs, uh, prior to June 30, 2022. The, the reason for the necessity of this amendment is that, uh, let's say you were to close on a property on June 20th, technically you are eligible up until June 30th, uh, to apply for the credit. There is no way that you are able to, uh, it's not humanly possible to get your application package, uh, together within a 10-day period. So this ensures that the legislative intent of the deadline is met, while still giving folks a reasonable period of time, uh, to, uh, submit their application and make sure it's complete. Um, before we get into agency comment reports, uh, I really want to take a moment to thank Tony DeFranco, who went through a good dozen iterations of this bill with me over the last, uh, few months. I also want to thank the Department of Law, uh, and the Department of Finance, uh, for their collaboration on this. Uh, I know that Department of Finance is opposed to it, but I specifically want to thank the folks from the Fiscal Integrity Unit, Dave Riker, uh, and Joanna Calada, who worked with me very closely to make sure that what has been proposed in this bill is mechanically sound. So again, there may be a difference on the policy itself of the extension of the credit. Uh, but I'm confident, and I think Finance will attest to the fact that what has been proposed is, is very mechanically sound and works from the perspective of, um, executing a, a, a locally authorized tax credit. So, uh, with that, um, and I know we've also been joined by Councilmember Ramos. Um, I'd like to get into, uh, agency comment reports. Uh, let's start with the Law Department. Hillary?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
You mentioned having sent around a map. I know that I saw a map of this tax credit back in 2019 when there was a bill before the council. I don't know that I have the map that you're referring to, or I can't find it right now.
The email's from March 31st. I'll forward it to you.
I just sent it as well, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Appreciate that. Uh, let's go, uh, Law Department. Hillary?
Mr. Chair, Hillary, ruling on behalf of the Law Department. Uh, we stand by our bill. It's, uh, meets form and legal sufficiency. And obviously, we're included on all these many iterations back and forth between Finance and Legislative Reference and yourself. So we have absolutely no reservations about the, uh, the bill and the way it's worded.
Thank you, Hillary. Um, Nina, I'm going to defer to you on Live Baltimore, who's a quasi-governmental, who is, uh, if, if you could explain, uh, Live Baltimore's position.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Live Baltimore is a nonprofit, doesn't typically take stances officially on legislation. Um, so they take no position on this bill.
Thank you, Nina. Uh, let's jump over to, um, Baltimore Development Corporation.
Luis Cardona, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our agency report in support of this bill.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of committee, planning has no objection, but would defer to Finance.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Department of Finance?
Good morning. Mara James for the Department of Finance. I'm also joined by Pedro Aponte, the Assistant Budget Director for Revenue. Finance, we stand by our report. We support with amendments. Um, so to get them going to some details of our report, we thought about this bill as splitting out two things. First is what you described, Mr. Chair, as the definition changed and filled a gap that was created around state legislation. Um, and the second was the actual extension by one year. So in doing our fiscal analysis, um, just to note, we've found that by changing the definition to fill that gap from July 29- we've found that by changing the definition to fill that gap from July 2019 to July 2020, it would be an increased cost over the current estimated cost, which is $1.3 million. It would be an increased cost of about $551,000. By adding the proposed extension, that would be an additional $800,000 for a total increased cost of around $2.6 million. So both of those changes together would be an increase of $1.3 million of forgone property tax revenue for the city. In general, Finance's perspective on tax credits is that we want to have them reviewed similarly to how you described, have it be a comprehensive review, and making sure that these credits are sustainable and efficient, but also that they accomplish what they're intended to do. Based on our analysis, we don't believe that this credit necessarily accomplishes its intent. Most of the credits go to only a few neighborhoods. Most recipients of the credit have incomes that are higher than the state or city average, and most were, who, most people that received the credit were already city residents or exclusively looking in the city. So it's not necessarily bringing in new residents. In addition, we recognize that the residential market is really strong right now, and that having an incentive like this does not appear to be necessary based on the market activity that we are seeing. So our amendments are to maintain the definition change, but to strike the extension to July 2022 and strike Section 3 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to summarize, what your proposed amendments do are basically limit the bill to fixing what I'm referring to as the blackout period of fiscal year 20. You would propose to not do the extension, and you would propose to not create the buffer period. I certainly appreciate, you know, where you're coming from. I would make a couple arguments. One, if you look at the map, there is a concentration of utilization of this credit in certain neighborhoods. In those instances, those are predominantly middle-market neighborhoods. And part of the reason for that is because this has been utilized by home builders who have done large-scale infill developments, whether that's Uplands or Greettown, et cetera, that first piece. And the second piece is, while I can appreciate that there is an exit survey that is conducted, I don't know what the participation rate in that is, and I don't know that that, you know, I would consider that entirely scientific as to whether or not, you know, these are folks that are coming in from outside of the city or not. What I do know is that, you know, of our general fund, probably 50 or 51% of that portfolio is made up of revenue that comes directly from real property and personal property tax. When you pull out the personal property and you pull out commercial property, we're left with somewhere in the neighborhood of $650 million. Plus or minus, does that sound right in terms of real property revenue? Pedro? 600, 700 million? You're on mute, Pedro.
Are you talking about residential portion only?
Yeah, residential real property.
It's about 600 million. That's roughly.
600 million. And then our tax revenue for the city is in the neighborhood of about 350 million?
What do you mean by that?
How much income tax revenue do we bring in?
Oh, okay. Close to 370, 380 million a year, income tax.
380 billion. So just the way I'm thinking through it, in terms of that income tax revenue proportional to real property revenue for residential property, I do think that there's a strong argument that there's essentially a piggyback benefit back, if you will, in terms of revenue that the city brings in as a result of these new constructions. But I'm going to go to Councilman Schleifer in a second, but I know that we have Mr. Frank from the Controller's Office still on. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the Controller's Office, Mr. Frank? You're on mute, sir. That looks like you're good. Mr. Schleifer is hydrating, and now he's back. Councilman Schleifer, and then Councilman Dorsey.
Fully hydrated. Thank you. So I just wanted to just point out, you know, in response to Finance Department, and I can only speak on behalf of my district. So in looking at the map, I see there's, I think it's 66 different neighborhoods that have people who've applied for it and who've gotten this credit. I can speak for, like, in my district, just in interacting with constituents who've reached out, whether they're having issues with filling out the forms or whatever it may be, the people who I've come across that have been doing this in my district were simply deciding between the city or the county, and they needed a larger home, so they had two options. They were either going to take the roof off of this current house and build, or they were going to just move to the county into a larger home. And so I can just tell you for a fact that a lot of the ones in my district, like in neighborhoods like Glen, Cross Country, and Cheswold, those folks would end up being county residents if it wasn't for this specific tax credit. And that is something that I hear more often than pretty much any other issue in the city, is the tax cost differential between living in the city and living in the county, because we have, you know, four miles of city-county border in my district. And so, you know, this tax credit is very important to those neighborhoods. And when you go and actually see some of these projects that are done, it would actually surprise you to just see that people have invested so much, you know, in certain, you know, certain spots that they were in, but they liked the neighborhood, they liked their neighbors, and so they're willing to spend, they make their largest expenditure on improving their house and adding value to that property in the city, rather than picking up, rooting, and moving to the county to find a home that would cost them the same, but would be significantly larger. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for submitting this bill.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dorsey, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, look, I just want to, I guess I have a couple questions. Are we at a point where I could ask a couple questions of Finance Department?
One second. I want to say that we did law, we did finance, we did planning, we did BDC, we did Live Baltimore. Yes, now is an appropriate time for questions of agencies.
Thank you. First, I just, I want to just voice my opposition to any statement that this map demonstrates that there's an equitable distribution of this credit. I think that while there are clearly some outliers, it's really clear that this map represents exactly what everybody in Baltimore City knows you're talking about when you say the white town. And that it correlates also with the fact that white people have a much higher median income in Baltimore City than black people, and the statement from the Finance Department that the credit, you know, disproportionately advantages higher-income communities. I really just think it's, I just can't disagree any more greatly with any assertion that this is an equitable tax credit in terms of its distribution, what neighborhoods benefit from it throughout the city. Second, I want to ask the Finance Department about this idea that the sponsor, the chair, raised in his introductory remarks about any potential burden of turning off and turning back on the tax credit. Is this really some sort of, I mean, if the committee were to decide to adopt the Finance Department's recommended amendments, and then later reflect on, you know, supposing that this, what is it, Ernst &amp; Young report comes and says, actually, you should do this tax credit at some later date, is there any actual significant burden to ceasing and then starting the tax credit, a couple of points?
So if that question's for me, yeah, that language is coming directly from Joanna and Dave Riker.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear that from the Finance Department directly, if I could, please.
Pedro, Mara, you're, one of you were in a meeting with me with them?
Mara, I don't know. Can I jump in and discuss a point? Yeah, so there are two things. The reimplementation of tax credit as it is right now wouldn't be a problem. That's why the language remains. But if we go and change the credit as the state law modified last year, that will require additional ways that we might not have available right now. That's one issue that Building Intelligence, or the Fiscal Integrity Office brought in. The structure for the new tax credit has a bracket as is intended by the state law. That is something that we don't have the tools to manage that form currently.
And Mr. Chair, it's okay, I was just messaging. Oh, nevermind. It sounds like Joanna wanted to speak, but it sounds like Pedro covered it. I think we're good.
I want to apologize. And maybe it was my computer, but Pedro was breaking up a whole lot, and I basically got a really choppy sense of an answer there. Is there any possibility that that could be reiterated?
Pedro?
Sure. I'm not on mute right now, right? Yeah, okay. So, Councilman Dorsey, the current way, the current structure of the credit, there's no issues with continuing the way it is. The problem is if we terminate it, and then we introduce a new, you know, contracted tax credit based on the modified state or the modified structure of the state law, that will have operational issues for us. That's not, right now, we don't have the resources or the system now capable to manage the new structure of the credit.
But, but we'll be able, but despite that, this credit can go on despite the changes of the state. We didn't change it, go forward with this credit without any additional changes necessary?
As it is, yes. It could continue as it is, because this is based on the prior legislation. We are not introducing a modification of the tax rate. This is exactly how it's structured.
Thank you.
I'll just go on the record and disagree with my response to the discussion of equity, and I'll specifically reference 278 homes in Greettown, 141 homes in Uplands, 34 homes in Middle East, 34 homes in Pig Town, 12 in Johnson Square, 12 in Barclay, 12 in Green Mount West. But we are certainly to disagree with our. Colleagues, any other questions for our city agencies? There are amendments from the Department of Finance. I'm strongly opposed to those amendments. And would ask for colleagues' consideration to also oppose those amendments. But I will certainly open up the floor if there is a council member who wishes to move those amendments.
I would move those amendments favorable, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion by Dorsey. Is there a second to that? A motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
Motion to move the bill favorably, McCray?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
Second, Milton.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. Costello is a yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes 6-1 and moves to second reader on Monday, May 3rd, at 5:00 PM. We're at the next meeting in the City Council. Colleagues, thank you all for hanging in there for two hours.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Public testimony?
We have public testimony. Again, I really need to get back to in-person hearings. I apologize. Can you open it up for public testimony, please?
I'd just like to state that Mr. Watson is no longer in the hearing. So I'm going to go to Derek M. Do you have anything you would like to say?
Nothing.
Okay.
Derek, I sincerely apologize that we moved this bill before getting to public testimony. My sincere apologies. That does not reflect the extent to which the committee values public input. That is a product of technical difficulties, and that is on me and adjusting to virtual hearings. So my sincere apologies, Derek. I want to thank you for participating in the hearing today.
Okay, and one more, Mr. Chair. Will Heckinger? Do you have anything you would like to say?
No, I'd like to thank the council for your work on this issue. It is much appreciated by the community.
Okay, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Marguerite. Appreciate everyone for hanging in there for two hours. We are now in recess.